We'd like to welcome everybody to the New Bern War on the Meeting and tonight has a special guest in it. And, you know, during the COVID times, I know everybody's probably like me, you're not able to communicate with everybody like you'd like to. So my guest tonight is talking up of the city of New Bern next. She actually came to City Hall to address a letter to the city about a very serious topic. And I said, well, if you're kind enough to do that and not malice to me, why don't I let you read it? So we're going to do that in a minute. So to start meeting off, we'd like to welcome everybody. And at this time, the third night, will we give my all my best?
Yes, ma'am. Citizens, tonight I would like for Miss Reverend Ethel Sampson to give a prayer, please.
Grace, good morning, everybody. Tonight, I was thinking of a beautiful prayer that was that Jesus told the disciples to say in his Spirit, he said in for this occasion. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily prayer. Forgive us our trespasses, and we forgive those who trespass against us. We is not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thy is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen.
Okay, this time we'll go do the pledge of allegiance. Would you like to join? Okay, turn around up there. Tell everybody to, you ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you tell us the robe?
Alderman Bingle, here. Alderman Harris.
Here.
Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Outlaw.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman Best.
Present.
Alderman Odom.
Here.
Okay. At this time, we're going to have petitions of citizens, and our first petition is from Kate Marshall. And if you would come forward and read, and you actually have four minutes to say what you want to say about the city government. I know that I read in the letter you're interested in being mayor at some point. So you can read about that and anything else you think you want to be doing. Four minutes.
Dear Mr. Outlaw, first of all, I think you have the coolest name of all time. My name is Jacqueline Marshall, and I am 10 years old. I'm writing to inquire about Halloween on October 31st. Due to COVID-19, children and adults must wear masks for safety reasons. However, people can still spread germs by touching candy wrappers so as to hand them out, hand the candy out. Then, when trick-or-treaters go to eat any candy, they too will touch the candy. I find this to be a serious problem that should be addressed, and I beg of you not to cancel Halloween because those kids really love our candy. Luckily, I have a suggestion. Could you make it a law, or at least a rule, that if you're handing out candy, you must wear gloves, preferably nonplastic, so as to help with the plastic problem? Also, not to be rude, when you introduce yourself as Mr. Outlaw, do people think you're a bandit? My dad, he's over there, he had another idea of what to do because people, the main thing with COVID to stop the spread is to social distance. So he thinks that the people who are handing out candy should just leave like a basket outside, and the kids should come and grab it with their gloves so that they're social distancing. Thank you.
All right. I really thank for your letter. We've, every Friday, in Metro Miami, there's the 30 largest cities in Long Island, New Bern being one of them. We have a phone conference call, and for the last four weeks, planning here, this topic has come up, and what the city is going to do. So we will be taking that up, and I thank you so much for that letter. Okay, so at this time, Reverend Ethel Sampson, Outlaw, I forgot you were going to be speaking, or would you go first? Come on back up. Thank you.
While she's coming up, Mayor, I just wanted to make a point that in the West, whenever the United States was being formed, that marshals were often used to take out outlaws.
I've got a couple of things to add to that.
Well, I received an unsigned letter Friday, and I thought that when I come to the Board of Alderman Meeting, if I was still living, I would bring it and let the people listen to it. And before this is the, it's marked, it's marked with my first, my name on it. It said, Mrs. Sampson, thank you for your outstanding work, and tireless effort in supporting the community. Y'all were standing by Recreational Center to be rebuilt on the same location. But the reality is, it is not going to happen. The plans were made already without the community input. In their mind, the area is to run down, the two million dilapidated houses, unkempt yards, to build a million-dollar building. They want to put it at a location where the white skeleton without being threatened. And I sense I can understand. The drug culture has brought pain, misery, and enslavement to our people. I remember our people had cried and digested. Some protest black lives matter, for the black man is taking the lives of one another. Some dressed like thugs and hoodlums. We are anxious we need to solve ourselves. God looks at a person's heart, not their skin color. When God looks down from heaven, he doesn't see one race, he sees the human race. Thank you again for your support and hard work for the community. Only God can straighten the mess the world is in. Only God has the power, qualities, and ability to solve the problem of the racism, discrimination, injustice. He will, and is not going to, be long. Thank y'all, but let me read this letter.
Okay, we have a more petition, citizens. Madam Clerk.
Next, sir.
Okay, this time, let's go to the consent agenda.
Mayor, make motion to approve the citizen agenda.
Second. Motion, second is their discussion. Seeing that all the motions say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Mr. Stevens, let's go. Item number seven.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number seven is a public hearing on the 2020-2021 CDVG Draft Annual Action Plan. This is something that comes up every year that we review, and at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Amanda Owen-Salen, who's here to do a presentation on this annual action plan and answer any kind of questions the board may have.
Good evening, Mayor. I'm Borg. Is that better? Yes. Okay. Can y'all hear me okay? Good evening. Tonight, as the city manager stated, I will be giving a brief over the 2020 Annual Action Plan for our Community Development Block Grant Program. I'll be doing a brief presentation, and then you all are asked to consider calling a public hearing to get citizen input on the draft plan. As the city manager mentioned, this is an annual process through HUD. It's a requirement for us to go through a series of public meetings and display the draft plan for input by our residents. And this plan is basically a strategic plan for how we will implement and execute activities to spend our CDVG entitlement allocation. And as you all will remember, we recently updated our five-year consolidated plan, which outlines our longer-term and five-year strategies to address community needs. For the 2020 allocation, we have received $258,814 to go toward three areas that we have devised in the draft plan, including general administration. We are allowed up to 20% of our annual entitlement allocation to go toward administration of the program. We have identified $107,000 to go toward housing rehabilitation, and another $100,000 to go toward the Duffy Field Stormwater Enhancement Project for Phase Two of that particular project. In addition, this year, as part of our annual action plan, which is a little bit different than past years, we are receiving $152,000 approximately of CDVG CB funds. This is related to the CARES Act and a $2 billion amount of money that went to HUD to respond, prepare for, and do activities in the community to better prepare for or respond to the coronavirus or COVID-19. We are proposing for $137,000 of that to go toward rent and utility assistance for our citizens, for subsistence payments, to help protect against disconnects or evictions. And another portion of that, $15,000, will go toward administration of those funds to monitor that program as well. Here's a breakdown of these projects. This is all outlined in the draft plan, but it's a pretty lengthy document, so I just wanted to go over some of the highlights. The first one is administration. You can see that it's basically covers staff salaries, you know, cost to administer the program, certain materials, mailings, cost of notices in the newspaper, as well as monitoring of any subrecipients. The other 2020 projects that are proposed are housing rehabilitation in the Five Points area. These funds would be given to the Redevelopment Commission of New Bern for rehabilitation work of rental properties within the community. And that would be a multi-year activity. The additional funds to go toward the Duffy Field Stormwater Project would cover any engineering permitting and possible acquisition of Phase Two of that engineering project. As you will remember, you all approved a contract, and Phase One construction of that project is underway right now to cover a sub-basin in the Duffy Field community to protect against flooding and improve general safety and appearance within the community as well. Finally, the CDVG CB, the response to the coronavirus pandemic, would provide funds to a nonprofit agency to issue rent and utility assistance payments to eligible applicants. So there would be certain eligibility criteria that those individuals would have to meet, including residency and income requirements. Excuse me. So as you can see, we're also required to make sure that all of the activities that we're doing meet a national objective and are an eligible activity under HUD. All of the activities we have proposed for this program year will benefit low to moderate income individuals. There is a certain percentage of funds that could go toward, you know, not benefiting low-income individuals, but for this program year, all of our funds would go toward that. In addition, addressing housing affordability is a key need that we identified through a five-year CON process. And you can see that based on the allocation of the CDVG CB funds, we would be able to help approximately 77 households. So, you know, that would help go toward covering their costs and how they are overburdened, you know, with rent and utility payments, you know, may have lost some jobs or other challenges related to the pandemic. I'll go through right now some of the strategies that have been outlined in the CON plan, number one being the housing strategy. As you're aware, housing affordability and the availability of housing units within the city of New Bern remains a constant challenge. That, of course, was exasperated by Hurricane Florence two years ago. So homeownership, housing construction, are two needs identified, as well as housing rehabilitation and fair housing activities. That's a number-one priority that we hear in all of our listening sessions with the community, from residents, from our outreach to other organizations and agencies throughout the area. Homelessness strategy, to improve living conditions and basically protect against homelessness and or homeless persons that have different challenges within our community. So to provide better housing, to provide operations and support in the community, homeless prevention, and rapid rehousing whenever possible. Special needs strategy would be helping people that may have special needs to identify proactive housing solutions for them, as well as social services to provide programs either through the city of New Bern or through other agencies that can offer that support. And then accessibility in certain situations. We can improve access to housing or rental houses as well. Community development strategy, so this includes things like infrastructure, community facilities, public services, public transit clearance, to remove some and blight, as well as removing, you know, architectural barriers or improving overall public safety, which you can know from the Duffy Field Stormwater Project, that is a community development project as well. I went through that relatively quickly. If anyone has questions, I can answer those now, or you're welcome to hear from the public.
Okay. All the candidates.
When you said that agencies will handle the monies for the rent and utilities, how many agencies are you looking at to handle that? One or two?
It will be one agency, and we have identified Religious Community Services, RCS, here in our community. They already operate a rent and utility assistance program, so they have the capacity to be able to provide, to provide those services to the community.
So that's where the individuals will go to apply?
Yes. We will basically give it to RCS as a subrecipient. Through a subrecipient agreement, it will outline the criteria to meet all the HUD eligibility criteria that we have to cover, and then our staff will monitor to ensure, you know, quality of the program execution.
Very good. Thank you.
When will that become effective? Oh, I apologize. When would that, when would that be available? Is it when you actually get the funds?
Yes. So basically, we know that we will receive those funds, the annual action process and the public hearing process, once the Board of Alderman would approve that final plan, which is approved to be on your next board agenda. Per HUD's guidelines, we cannot hold a public hearing and vote on the plan in the same public meeting, so that will come before you next time. Then we will submit that plan to HUD for review and approval, and that will basically release the funds to us to do these programs. So end of September, we'll submit the plan. They've been pretty quick to get back to us, so probably within mid-October, I would expect that we'd have the funds.
Amanda, before the funding was handled, for the housing rehabilitation was handled through your department, so now those funds will be handled under the Redevelopment Commission for the portion of housing rehabilitation?
Yes. We are proposing to bring new rental housing online, so it will not be rehabilitation. In the past, we did a small or minor rehab program that went to individual homeowners. This will be a larger-scale program to bring on additional rental units, so to bring on an additional rental unit in the community that did not exist previously.
So you're telling me that if I have a homeowner in my, in Ward Five, which is the Duffy Field, portion of Duffy Field, those funds are not available to aid that citizen anymore for just some rehabilitation, to maybe repair on a roof or something like that? Is that what you're saying?
Right. We have suspended that program, so we are no longer doing the minor rehabilitation program in this annual action plan.
Okay. Any other questions?
So in your goals that you listed, you had several goals. One of them, of course, was transportation, which is a great need in the community. We have no dollars planned for that, is correct? Do you list the goals even though you're not taking any of the money to go towards that? Is that correct?
Correct. I just tried to give a upper, larger-scale review of our five-year annual or our consolidated planning process, which identified numerous community needs, and then each one of these activities, some of them, you know, accomplish strategies within those, within various priorities, but it may not, an annual action plan may not cover all of those goals.
Okay. Because of the funding?
Right. Because of the availability of funding.
You leave it in there just in case additional funding is available, then you can come back and go back to your plan. You don't have to amend the plan.
Right. Correct. So the five-year document kind of lists all community needs based on, you know, our research, based on the data we review, and then the annual action plan kind of drills down into some specific deliverables and outcomes that we can then measure and report back to HUD as accomplishments.
Okay. One final comment question. I want to delve a little bit more into what Alderman Best was asking you, because I'm, I think I hear her. In the past, I think I understood that not very many people accessed the funds for repair because the guidelines were very stringent. Is that correct? I mean, it was difficult to use the money. Has that been the case, or why would you abandon a program that may have been successful? Is that correct, Alderman Best, am I asking? I think that's what I hear.
Yeah. You go ahead with that, because I got more to come.
Okay. So our minor housing repair program was for homeowners within the city of New Bern, so they had to be owner-occupied homes. It provided basically up to $10,000 for rehab of the property. We did have numerous properties that we have rehabbed. There are certain challenges related to the federal standards to bring homes up to minimum housing compliance, and oftentimes, that $10,000 was not necessarily enough funds to cover the amount of work that was needed in an individual home. There were also some other eligibility criteria that sometimes could not be met, or environmental review processes that had to occur for a home to, you know, be in compliance, that we could spend those funds. So there were multiple layers that that individual home would have to qualify for. And then, of course, Hurricane Florence happened, and there was certainly, you know, amount of damages that oftentimes might have been related to hurricane damage or exasperated problems, you know, within a home. So the availability of funds of what we were allowed to spend on each individual home did not necessarily cover the need, you know, for those properties.
So by going to a program where you're going to fund rental homes, is that, are you finding there's, you have more need in the rental market than you do in the homeowner-occupied?
Yeah. The study in the five-year CON plan definitely said that we wanted, needed to increase the availability of rental homes that were affordable, safe, energy-efficient, and that was a program that we had not taken on yet. So this is our foray into that, into that category.
Thank you.
So you're telling me that you're looking at a rental property that is owned by a landlord, correct?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
It would be a property that would be a rental unit that would be owned and rented by the Redevelopment Commission to low-income individuals. So still the criteria there that, you know, in perpetuity or in the timeframe, you know, HUD requires, which is, I think, is 20 years, will have to be rented to low-income individuals.
Okay. Maybe I'm missing something. Are you saying that you're speaking of rental property that it will be owned by the Redevelopment Commission?
Yes.
Not a landlord involved?
Correct. No. It'll be owned by the Redevelopment Commission, and then it will be rented to, you know, an individual that is low-income in our community.
I'm still having a problem with this plan, because, you know, in the past, we got a lot of senior citizens that live on fixed income and are not able to fix their homes. And just to knock that portion out of this plan, I just, I'm not comfortable with that, because I have so many elderly people that need some assistance, and there's no way that y'all can work around this through, you know, the HUD guidelines or whatever? Or is this a program simply that you, that Development Services and Redevelopment Commission has come up with?
It's been, you know, we've had multiple meetings with different agencies. We've listened to our citizens. We've worked with our advisory board, our Community Development Advisory Board, to help identify, you know, what the needs are. There are other programs that other organizations and agencies are doing, especially in the realm of recovery, and helping, you know, individuals age in place. You know, and at this particular time, we elected to remove that from the draft plan. You know, it, again, is a draft plan, so, you know, that's why we're having these meetings, is to listen to your feedback and the feedback of our community, and, you know, determine if there are any changes that need to be made.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Does this program affect, like, commercial? Like, if I owned a building and maybe to do, like, you know, fix my roof, am I still able to go to the city and say, hey, can you work with me on this?
This particular plan does not really address the economic development strategy. That would be commercial properties or removing blight. The city of New Bern does have a facade grant program that is separate and not funded by CDVG funds.
Okay.
Amanda, could you maybe share with us historically how that program that Alderman Best is speaking of has gone? Because I thought I remember in the years past, hearing that we ended up with money left over that we couldn't spend because it couldn't meet the criteria. So maybe if we could put it in?
Yes. So, you know, oftentimes, we did have a waitlist of individuals that wanted to apply for our housing rehab, our minor housing rehab program. Unfortunately, what we found is there was a lot of attrition with that program, meaning that we may have had, you know, a list of 10 homes that we identified and would be funded under the budget. However, through, you know, title work, and there is a deed restriction, it basically is a forgivable loan or grant. Oftentimes, we would end up only having four homes that we would be able to proceed with, once we went through the environmental review process, once we could get a clean title on the property. There were a lot of challenges with that, and then you all will remember, we are currently dealing with a timeliness issue where, especially with Hurricane Florence and not being able to carry out those program year activities. HUD requires that at 60 days prior to the end of the year, the end of the fiscal year, they do a timeliness test, which basically means that we can only have one and a half times our annual allocation in our bank or in our line of credit. So the city of New Bern had exceeded that. So we are right now in basically a process where we report to HUD monthly what our accomplishments are to draw down funds. And through our CON plan and through our outreach in the community, we are trying to accomplish larger-scale projects that can have kind of a greater impact across many individuals within the community versus, you know, one house at a time, which was a great program. It just was really challenging for us to carry out in such a short period of time, just due to so many unknown factors that we couldn't control at the staff level.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? At this time, I'm going to open a public hearing. Anybody from the public that would like to come up and ask any questions, make any comments, about the sign, where you do that at this time?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second. Motion and second is their discussion. All the motions say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. What other action do we need to take on this at this time, Mr. Stevens?
I believe that's it. Anything else, Kate? That's it for now. Brings us back to you at the next board meeting for adoption.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just got item number eight.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number eight is consideration of the board to adopt a resolution to close specific streets for a revisioned Mum Fest, which is going to be called Mum Feast 2020. In response to the COVID-19 pandemic, Mum Fest has been safely reimagined and renamed as Mum Feast. Tonight, we have with us Lynn Herrable. I think she wants to come up and say a few words. I know she came here tonight. But ultimately, Swiss Bear is asking the city to use the Talbotts Lot at 304 and 308 South Front Street and to block off five parking spaces adjacent to that lot on each Friday and Saturday in October. Additionally, they're requesting that the 200 and 300 blocks of Middle Street, the 300 and 400 blocks of Pollock Street, and the 200 block of Craven Street be closed each of those days from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM on the Fridays and Saturdays in October. So there's a memo that's been included in your packet from Mr. Hughes. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Lynn. I'm sure she can give you more details about the reimagined MUM Feast 2020.
Thank you, Mark. So MUM Fest, obviously, due to the pandemic, cannot go on as planned or scheduled in any kind of safe manner. Our downtown businesses, though, do require to be propped up moving forward and they have, since the pandemic has begun. What we have done over the course of the last few months, as everybody here already knows, is we have had a street closure on Friday evening from 5:00 until 11:00. We've done the same on Saturday evening. So what we will be, what we are proposing to do for MUM Feast is an extension of that so that it goes through the day on Saturday, gives the restaurants an opportunity to serve two additional meals on the street, gives them more capacity, which allows them to make more money, which they're in desperate need of. We're going to also be having the retail establishments downtown have their goods be placed out onto the sidewalk. If it is possible for them to put a booth on the street, that is also fine. We are bringing in a minimum number of vendors. I can't stress that enough. Be about a half a dozen vendors that will be in place on each of the weekends in October because this is a five-weekend event. They will just simply be positioned with a lot of spacing in between each vendor in order to, to bridge the retail gaps that exist in our downtown. Very often, people don't go beyond a certain point. This will help move people into the direction of additional retail and additional restaurants as well. There, on the Talbot Lot, that's what was mentioned by the city manager earlier, we will be having about five food vendors that are traditional MUM Fest food vendors. Again, we've measured everything out. They can be very nicely spaced apart from one another. So there's plenty of space for people to be able to queue up, to be able to place their orders. And in addition to that, on South Front Street, we will block off all of the parking spaces that flank the Talbot Lot so that we can do curbside pickup. So I don't know if you have any questions about how this is going to be handled, but I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
How is the CDC guidelines going to work if we're only in 2.5 in regards to only having about 50 people congregated outside?
We are moving, the way, this is not any different really than, it's really not any different than it is for Friday and Saturday evenings. And the governor permits to have on-street dining, so this falls within those guidelines.
Other questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution to close specific streets for MUM Feast 2020.
Second.
Motion and a second is their discussion. See, now let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle? Yes. Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for all you're doing. Let's get on number nine. Did the board want to, you ready for the presentation or did you?
Mayor, I know I've discussed this earlier with you today with the city manager. And I'd like for the Board of Alderman maybe to take a minute to see if we would delay discussion of the radio project until our work session in October when we could have a full workup. You know, we talked about this earlier and I'm still not 100% with the information I've received and trying to do a little more research. So we had asked the city manager to have our work, a work session in October to go over finances. So again, I've mentioned this to the mayor and asked him about that. I certainly would, you know, whatever the board wishes.
Thanks, Mayor. Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is, this is basically a software upgrade, upgrade, correct?
Yeah, I know Chief's here. He's ready, he's here to answer any kind of questions the board may have with regards to it. But yes, essentially, we have, if I relate it to everyday usage, this is similar to like if I was running Microsoft XP and Microsoft says, we're no longer going to support Microsoft XP. So you need to upgrade to, you know, Windows 2020, okay? Well, if that's the case, then there, if your computer breaks during this or your programs break during this XP version of unsupported software, then you're pretty much on your own. So this upgrade essentially brings our system upgraded and up to date with where we need to be for the existing software.
Chief, let me ask you a question. When will they, it's my understanding that they will eventually stop supporting our radio system software, correct?
That has already occurred, yes.
So there are no, there's no longer support?
Correct.
So are we required under any mandate to do this upgrade? And if so, when is it effective?
I wouldn't say we required any of, under any mandate, but obviously, if our system fails, then we have no radio system. And.
And the reason why this is coming up now is because originally, you were under the impression that the 911 funds would pay for it in whole, correct?
Yes. The solution that our vendor first came up with was a sympathy solution, which was at the cost of $225,000. We petitioned the 911 board and they had agreed to pay that amount for that. We've set into motion to go ahead and proceed in that manner. And once we got to that point, then all of a sudden, the vendor said, timeout, timeout, that solution will no longer work, that we needed a major uplift.
So we no longer have any support for our radio system?
Not total support, no, sir. As far as the software goes and certain parts of the tower and certain.
And how long will it take you if we were to, say, do it tonight? How long will it take you to get the upgrades in place?
The timeline that we had in place should be approved tonight, would be to start somewhere around December and would take until the end of June.
And I'm assuming this will affect the police department, fire department, and the entire city forces, correct?
Correct.
I think it's critical that we move on this. We knew it was coming. The issue was is that we thought that the 911 funds would be there to pay for it. How much is it going to cost us, Mark?
1.2 some million.
Chief, is Viper a back, I mean, how, I mean, God forbid, if it went down tomorrow, is there, is there a backup? Do you use Viper or do you go to the county system? What is the, what would you do in an emergency?
Viper is an auxiliary part of our radio system that we can go to. However, we have to have a Viper base station if we're going to go totally to move to a Viper system. And a Viper system is more, is more of a repeater type system.
I'm not talking about going to system, but would that be a backup? So you would, you would not have a community, you'd have zero communication if it went down?
We can communicate to sheriff's office. It would not be an effective system for the city, no.
Temporary.
And it's my understanding is Viper radios aren't very effective in, I know especially in the fire service. Is that correct, Chief Boyd? They don't have penetration, correct?
I'm a proponent of that. I was just asking.
Yeah, there's just, there's no penetration in.
I have to piggyback along with you, Alderman Astor. I think this is something that we don't need to prolong. We need to go ahead and move forward with this, especially if it's going to create a hazard or a problem for our first responders and.
It won't take but one lightning strike or something like that, I would think. How are we going to pay for it, Mark?
Well, that's what the next items are for. So if you decide not to do this item, you don't need to do 10 and 11 because those are tied, associated with financing. So the intent is for them to be financed.
Any, you know, of course, I was involved in the first buying of a new system. And when we bought the new system, it was the end-all, be-all and we needed to buy it and we spent a lot of money to get it.
How many years ago was that?
10. But I know you came in shortly after that and that is probably not the system you would have bought for, for potentially what you're doing. Is there, you know, do we have a concern that with a new chief coming in the first of the year, would they want something different than this and then we're going to spend the money all over again? I'm just making sure that we have.
If I could speak on that, whether that was the system I would purchase or not, it would still have to be upgraded after so many years.
I understand that, but are we going to spend a million, two now and then spend another potentially $5 million if a different system?
Well, we have the control.
Yeah, that's.
I mean, if we upgrade the system.
Look, I'm being the devil's advocate here. I'm asking all the questions.
I'm going to help you answer that question, Alderman Bingle, because if we spend a million, two to upgrade that system now, unless there is an absolute catastrophic failure or the board directs me to do so, otherwise, I won't be bringing another five or six million-dollar radio system to the board.
So will we get another 10 years out of this?
That was my question. How long will this?
I think it was eight, six to eight, well, eight years is actually what they said, eight.
Oh, I have a question.
I do, Mayor. Chief, could you explain to us, was it the vendor that originally said we, for $250,000 we could upgrade and then the vendor changed midstream and said that won't work anymore?
Yes.
And what, what was their reason or justification behind that?
They said that the Harris folks would not support the upgrade solution that they came up with.
So.
That the sympathy component was no longer an answer to what we needed.
So I know we're always beholden to the vendor and technology and it's ever evolving, but my concern is, is that we're partnering with a vendor who gave us an alternative and then had a change because of hardware or the manufacturer of the actual, you know, equipment itself. But my question is, are we, are we making a rash decision tonight because we've got to do this because we feel like we're under the gun? When in reality, the best alternative might be to spend three, four, five million dollars and, and stretch that out if that gives us better capability and it's a better investment for the future. That's my only concern. I don't like making rash decisions. And it may be a situation, if we're going to finance this anyway, if you finance a brand-new system, do you finance it longer and could the price be the same? I mean, anyone calls to the city, I don't know, but I'm just saying, have we gone through, can you assure me that staff has gone through all those different processes to make sure this is the best decision?
Yes, we have. We've been looking at this approximately a year and a half to almost two years. And if you go to a new system, again, eight years down the road, you'll be at the same point that you are today, that you'll have to upgrade the system with technology.
The last thing that I would say is, I think this is one of those situations where with technology and IT going forward, we should have some sort of allocation or a capital, maybe is, is this in our capital improvement plan, Mr. Stevens? So we know each year that we need to be setting funding aside.
Yeah, it's in the police's capital improvement plan typically each year. I mean, our finance department, they usually request of the department heads a five-year capital plan in advance. And that's reviewed and kind of gives us a hurry forecast of what kind of financing we're going to be doing or looking at in the future. So that's all included as part of stuff that department heads submit to the budget team. If the board wishes to see all those documents, we can certainly provide those. But it helps us, it helps us provide a budget, a balanced budget to the board and helps us make decisions internally about which capital projects we're approving, which ones we're not.
My last comment, I'll just say that, you know, if you come to us and you ask for, you know, $100,000 air conditioning system that went out in a building, obviously, we know we've got to do that. This is a substantial investment and I think this would have been one that some of that additional information could have been provided that would have helped put us a little bit more at ease versus, hey, we need to make this decision or we're going to lose our capability to communicate. So I appreciate it.
Why did it come about like that? I mean, why, why all of a sudden, I reckon, is the question, is it because the 911 money was going to pay for it or we were just going to move forward with getting the upgrades?
Yes, we had moved, we, again, we had a plan set in motion that the $225,000 sympathy component would have solved that problem. And it wasn't until we got to the point, I think it was in May, that we actually implemented it and I think I forwarded the letter to city manager that we got a letter from the our vendor saying that that no longer was a viable, viable solution.
I have a question.
If you don't mind if I ask, sir. We knew later on down the road, we would still have to do some of the other additions that we had discussed with the city manager. And he had, he had supported us in going with the immediate solution and we were going to address the other issues later on.
So can we, Johnny, I'm sorry, can we still use the 911 funds to pay for a portion of this upgrade?
The $225,000 will still be used.
Okay.
So what is it, 14, 1.4 something?
Is that annually?
No. No, this is a one-time cost. 1.2 is a one-time cost.
I'm talking about with the 911 funds, can we use them annually to pay, help pay for this?
They will continue to support the system, but we will no longer have to do this uplift again. So it won't be an annual uplift.
I understand.
What you're saying, can you apply the, if we get $225,000 in funds a year from 911, could we apply them towards the debt service?
No, this 225 is just for that particular component.
A one-time.
Directly with 911.
So it's a one-time payment?
Yes.
Chief, did I, y'all know this is not, I was out for a minute. Wasn't there going to be a reduction in the maintenance fee when this upgraded?
Yes, I think it's gone from 250 down to 140 the first year. And then, and then it'll be a gradual, gradual increase every three years. I mean, excuse me, a 3% increase every year.
Yeah. I want to make sure that was indexed at a reasonable rate, but we were going to save some money on the maintenance. Yes, sir?
This is a very serious topic. Why was it this brought to the retreat if we knew that this was going to happen so suddenly?
Again, this was an item we were going to handle internally with a $225,000 expense that was going to be paid for and had been identified by our staff as well as the vendor to be paid for through the 911 funds. It wasn't until May, three months after, or almost four months after, I guess, three, four months after our retreat, did we find out that this is not going to be enough. You've got to do all this other upgrade, which now costs us 1.4 million versus 225 or 250,000. So we, we had no idea it was going to be 1.2. We were trying to address it internally so that it would be taken care of through the 911 funds and the board wouldn't have to worry about it.
So actually, what you're saying, you didn't have a backup plan. So right now, you're expecting us to come up with the money to do something that we need to do. I'm just trying to get an understanding here. That's a whole lot of money that, on a situation that is desperately needed. But yet, you know, all of a sudden, it wasn't a backup plan to say, well, if that don't happen, we can do this here.
I know there's not a backup, there's not a backup. If you don't get the soft, if you don't get the software upgrade, you're, you're dead in the water.
He just said that they have a plan, that they plan to do things, to have that on the plan. What was it you just asked just now, Alderman Bingle?
Let me, let me ask this question. Knowing that there was going to have to be an upgrade down the road and you've got a five-year capital improvement plan, has some of this funding of this 1.2 that we're being asked for in staff's back, backroom discussions and conversations, you guys were eventually preparing to make this investment, it's just happening a little bit sooner? Is that fair?
Correct. We thought the sympathy project would be a Band-Aid that lasts us, buys a few more years and then we was going to implement it in our capital improvement plan. Yes, sir.
Wasn't it 2025, was, or 2023?
I think it was more like 2023.
Okay, somewhere right in there was kind of the, the plan. So, I mean, this, this is, this is kind of a, when we find out that this is no longer supported, it goes with this component and everything else is along with it. So you might as well do it now versus wait until 2023 whenever you're doing that upgrade.
So it was important for us to, 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 to think about that, to include that, to share it to us instead of just bringing it to us on us all of a sudden to say, we got to do this. That's all I'm saying.
So how much more discussion do we need, Mr. Mayor?
Well, the only discussion that, my opinion on the whole matter is that I, I think, as I, I said earlier and the last time this got brought up, there aren't a lot of other options. We either upgrade. And the only other option is to purchase another system. And I don't think you're going to purchase another system for 1.2 or 1.5 million dollars. I think, I think the, the next system you get is going to be a lot more money than that plus the training and everything else that'll go with it. I did support Alderman Bingle's, our discussion about the, I don't want personally wait till the last part of October, earlier part of October. I, I wanted to get a finance retreat of sorts. We did discuss, six months ago, we were going to do that in October. And I would like to, you know, to really. ago, we were going to do that in October. And I would like to, you know, to really fine-tune the numbers because this is quite an expenditure. There are two items on that that we, we want to prove, and I think we do want to make decisions on both of them. But I just, I simply don't know, it's no different than in any one of these businesses in this room. You have to upgrade your software. I bike the board every year and do it, and don't like having to do it, but I don't really have a lot of alternatives. You know, I think the city, we tested doing some virtual reality software years ago, and I thought maybe that's the way systems were going to go, particularly in the communication end of it. But that's not come to pass. So I think we are where we are. It's just a matter of when we want to make the decision. I personally'd like to do it in the October finance retreat because there's quite a few other things. And part of that was, we did not know as a city where we were going to be with the COVID, where we were going to get relief funds, and while other cities are furloughing and having layoffs and things like that, I think we're in a pretty good position. But again, I personally would like to wait till October.
How much would it cost us annually, Mark?
Your financing payment is?
And that'll be for both of the projects, not just?
Yeah. Well, one of, for this, for just for this project alone, 1.2 million annually over eight years, we're looking $150,000 a year, plus some interest. I don't have it broken down individually, but that'll be on the next agenda items, looking at that. We have, we have put these, both of these projects, we've put three different financing projects out to bid and have our coming due tonight with recommendations for all three. So, but we can hold this off until December and do it then, I mean, until October, if that's what you choose to do.
And Mayor, what are we saving per year in operational maintenance fees for the software?
About, I thought it was about 70, but you just said 110, so I'm going to double-check. I haven't looked at it for a couple of months, but I thought.
Okay, well, about 110.
Okay. So, yeah, so he said it's 110. I had in my mind 70, but it's, it's significant.
Is that annually, Chief?
Yes, for the first year, it was a 3% increase every year after.
So give us the breakdown of enterprise funds and everything else. How this shakes out as far as the expenses of this, if I thought it was 1.2 million?
Do you know, Mayor, what the breakdown is?
At this point, at this point, we're looking at funding it primarily through the general fund. I have not looked, I have not broken it down.
There's going to be some breakdown that would go, obviously, to the other funds, but it's very minimal because you've got minimal users in public works, parks and rec, and water utilities and electric utilities. The majority of the expense in the use is probably going to be, it's going to be based on a call of service or usage, and that's all going to be police and fire primarily.
We looked just briefly. There's a few, a few radios that Charlie Script uses, but it's, at the end of the day, it's finable.
Well, I mean, I've resigned myself from the research I've done, that this city is going to spend, for 30 square miles, it's going to spend $150,000 a year on communications for our first responders is what we're going to be doing. And it's just a matter from the decision-making process of, are there any alternative communication systems that are any, any better than this one? I'm not an expert at it. I assume there could be, but I don't know that the cost-benefit of totally a new system, that's the only other thing you've got to compete against.
I too was involved heavily in the purchase of this radio system that we currently have. And you're talking about something that could take 18, 24 months to research, go on bids, and probably even longer than that, and getting the equipment in place, and the radios in and everything else. I mean, it's down, it's nothing that you're going to do overnight. The issue I have is, is that we've got a system here that's unsupported. Now, whether we should have known about it earlier or not, that's a different story. But it's unsupported, and if a police officer is in need and the radio system goes down, or if there's a firefighter inside of a burning structure and their system goes down, or if a poor electrician or the electrical worker is on a utility pole and trying to make sure, whatever electricians do up on top of utility poles and the system goes down, it's different than if, and no disrespect for developed services, but it's different than if a development service person wanted to call in and say, did so-and-so get a permit? So as soon as we get to item number 10, I'm going to make the motion that we go forward with the upgrade. It's got to be done, and the longer we wait, the chances are that we'll have a failure, we won't have a fix for it, we're going to be dead in the water, and it could jeopardize some of our employees. And that's the last thing I want to do.
Question, as far as the quotes that we've got for the bank, when do they expire? How good is that interest rate good through?
I got 30 days.
30 days from now? So, and then you have to get LGC approval, and they meet monthly? Or is that a monthly process?
Yep.
So just hypothetically, if we were to delay this to October, when we have a work session, it's then going to be November before you get LGC approval. Our interest rate quote would be expired. It will be November, after November. Who knows what the interest rate's going to be?
Yep.
So.
I will, I can get them renewed at any time, but that's, that's where we're at right now. That's, that's the reality of it. Yes, it is.
So let's go to item 10.
So no action on?
What are we going to do?
Do we need action on this item?
Item number nine?
Number nine, don't we need action?
It's just a discussion, and it essentially was leading up to 10 and 11. If the board has any more questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
What about the, is there, is there discussions? I reckon we'll discuss item 10, Pleasant Hill Community Building.
Young, technically, it's opposite on item nine. Are we through with item number nine?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So Alderman Bingle asked to set aside the discussion for number nine, but we have discussion?
That's correct.
Okay, so, I mean, are we going to be able to satisfy number 10 if we didn't really have a re-discussion on what was going on?
I think we did have a discussion because her motion wasn't seconded.
I didn't make a motion.
Or no motion, so.
I didn't make a motion.
I'm satisfied with the discussion that we had.
I am, too.
Okay, let's go to item number 10.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 10 is a resolution approving the submission of an application to the local government commission for financing of a radio project upgrade and the Pleasant Hill Community Building. To proceed with the radio system upgrade that we just discussed, and the Pleasant Hill Community Center Building, which was in the budget, authorization is needed to file an application with the local government commission for approval of financing because we intend to use debt service to purchase both of these. Once the application is submitted, it is anticipated the LGC will consider approval at their November 3 meeting. The combined financing for both projects is estimated not to exceed $1,803,895. After receiving the LGC approval, the city will need to hold a public hearing on the financing. There's amendments included in your package from Ms. Hogan. She can answer any questions you may have.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving the submission of an application to the local government commission for financing of a radio project upgrade and the Pleasant Hill Community Building.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second on item number 10. Is there discussion? Before we have any questions, any comments? I think we did a pretty good job on item number nine doing that, so.
Just a question on the 300,000 for the building. I know that was in our budget. Is that, what, what is that 300,000 going to get us? Is it a shell building? Is it going to have a kitchen? Is it storage? Who's going to manage it? Is it going to be leased out like our other facilities are within Parks and Rec? Just some detail behind it.
Foster's got some vision on that. I'll give him, give some detail.
Yes, sir. So that will be a metal-structured building. Staff will be working on the interior of it. Most likely, it'll be a wide-open building with a catering kitchen in there with some storage space as well. It will be managed by Parks and Recreation. It will be available for rentals for parties, receptions, and things like that. Activities will also be held in the facility as well.
Can that be used for a shelter with cots for staff in the case of emergency?
It could be.
For staff.
Any other questions? Have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Des?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 11.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 11 is a resolution approving the financing of a radio project upgrade and the Pleasant Hill Community Building. Proposals were sought from three banks for the financing of a radio project upgrade and construction of the Pleasant Hill Community Center Building. As mentioned above, the total loan amount will not exceed $1,803,895. BBNT was the only bank that responded, offered a 10-year loan with a fixed interest rate of 1.75%. Happy to answer any questions?
Well, my only question is, that's just, why are none of the banks interested? I mean, a lot of times, we have five, six, seven banks interested in something. Did we need to be a little more zealous in our attempt to get somebody to bid on this thing?
I tried. I will tell you, I talked to our, the local bank that we do most of our banking through right over here, and they don't offer any, they're not currently offering any financing for these type of activities for governments for more than five years. So we had, we had three different items. The next item on here is the firetruck, so they would not offer a bid. They did offer a bid on another item we'll see tonight on the vehicles, which was a 59-month loan, and they offered a bid on that one. I talked to PNC. PNC said they're not going to, they're not going to be competitive all. They said, we're not going to bother with a bid because we can't come anywhere close. He said, I know the numbers you're going to get are going to be, you know, 1.1, 1.5, 1.7, 1. We're not going to get anywhere close to two. And then I got one from Wells Fargo, and they were basically the same. They said, we're not going to, we're not going to waste our time because we can't come close to that. We're not going to give below two. So I had two verbally tell me they weren't going to bother because they knew they couldn't compete. And then the other one, who did give us a second bid on the five, or the 59-month items, they came in, but they were actually higher. So BBNT actually was the only one who bid on the 10-year and then the 15-year loan for the, for the firetrucks as well. I tried four. If there's other ones you'd like me to go, I'm probably going to need to go back to these guys anyway and extend the deadline. So I can, I'm going to ask BBNT to extend it past 30 days, but I can also, if you've got some other suggestion, have at it. They're not interested right now in, in loans.
Thank you.
They probably had their fill with the PPP loan process, I'm sure.
Well, and interest rates are low. They're not making money off us, so.
Is there any more discussion on this that we need? If not, I would make a motion. I would make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the financing of a radio project upgrade and the Pleasant Hill Community Building.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion? Seeing, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Des?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 12.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 12 is a resolution approving the financing of fire apparatus. The 2019-20 budget approved the purchase of two different fire apparatuses, a Siphon pumper and a Siphon aerial platform. Proposals were sought from three different banks for the financing of the fire trucks for an amount not to exceed $1,720,621. Again, BBNT was the only bank that responded. The proposed term of the loan is 15 years with a fixed interest rate of 2.060%. Happy to answer any questions?
Support and questions?
Yep.
Alderman Astor, former fire chief, you might give us some update.
I have some fire trucks.
You might give us an update on the trucks.
Did we, actually, we just took delivery today, correct, Chief Boyd?
You came in tomorrow to the accepted test, and I can deliver tomorrow.
We took delivery of it. It arrived today, and you're going to be running the accepted test tomorrow, correct? And is this on the platform?
Yes, sir.
All right. Good. Then, Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving the financing of fire apparatus.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there discussion? Seeing, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Des?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 13.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 13 is a resolution approving the financing of 2021 capital purchases. The current year's budget approved certain capital equipment and vehicle purchases. Financing proposals were sought from three different banks. BBNT was the only one to respond. The proposed term for $1,210,673 loan is 59 months with a fixed interest rate of 1.19% interest. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
So move.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there discussion? Seeing, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Des?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 14.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 14 is a budget ordinance amendment for the coronavirus relief funds. Session law 2020-4 appropriated funding for the coronavirus relief fund as issued by the North Carolina Pandemic Recovery Office. Of the funds designated for Craven County, the county allotted $497,477 to the city of New Bern for expenses that support the county's CRF plan, which is the coronavirus relief funds plan. This budget amendment will acknowledge and appropriate this funding for various medical, public health, safety, and compliance costs associated with COVID-19. We're happy to answer any questions regarding this plan that you may have. Ms. Hogan's outlined that in her memo.
Before we have questions?
I just want to make a comment. You know, I've been, I don't know if anyone else, but I've been contacted by a couple of nonprofits and actually had a request submitted, asking for some of these funds to be dispersed to, to some nonprofits. And I would like just for the city manager to address that, and that all these funds are going to be spent doing things within the city or that the city needs to upgrade and do because of COVID, as well as it would be difficult, I think, at best, how, how do we pick and choose? I would hate to have to be a group that would have to pick and choose who got what.
Yeah, I think that's some of the difficulties, Alderman Bingle, is, you know, picking and choosing in between which nonprofits get it and which don't, because I'm sure they have all been impacted just as much as businesses with restaurants and retail shops and everything else has. The issues that we see is the government's response that we have as far as our plan, both what has already occurred, what is occurring now, and the future for this remainder of the calendar year of what we, or actually, our fiscal year, what we've got to do in order to maintain our coronavirus response. We still have staff time that's being allocated towards the COVID-19. HR is consistently putting time on time sheets that goes towards this. We also have some capital improvements that we need to do, and improvements to our facilities to meet the needs for the COVID, social distancing and separation of people so that we can still continue to provide services that we maintain as a city. So hopefully, that answers some of those questions that we do have in the plan. Mary had reached out to the department head, what, a month, month and a half ago, asking them for details about what each department needed to be spending on COVID and what they have already spent. So that's a lot of things that we're taking into account, even to the point, all the way down to the warehouse of buying our masks back initially when everything started. We've kind of started accounting for all of that.
Is just, is that a public document somewhere that if a citizen wanted to know how we spent that money? Is that?
I think it's outlined in the plan, actually.
It is in the plan. Okay. That's fine. Just so I can direct some.
And it was required of us to submit both what we, what we had determined as our existing costs versus what our, our expected potential cost will be for the COVID, and that was our submission to the county because the county has to review compliance of that plan in order for us to get the allocation of $497,000.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So these were the funds that I had talked about before in regards to talking about how they were going to be utilized. But some of the information states that the money could go towards health and residence, will outstanding utility bills, or provide internet access, food distribution, COVID-19 testing. Is there any specific reason why we haven't sat down and had a conversation on a way where we can actually directly impact the community with these funds?
I mean, we will, we can work at whatever the board's direction that they want us to do. We're bringing the plan before the board tonight for your review and approval so that we can get the funding from the county. Ultimately, the plan can be modified if necessary. Ultimately, the plan can be modified if necessary. We'd have to resubmit that to the county, and I'm looking for Mary to confirm that with a shake of the head, that's correct. We can modify that plan throughout the year, whatever our expenses are, but ultimately, you know, we have expenses internally, and for those who were impacted by utility payments and things, I think the governor had already taken actions to, to ease the, the payment and payback requirements, which we're continuing to implement currently, as well as, as Amanda identified tonight, some of the CDBG CV funds for those who can, who can be approved based on what their income levels are for potential relief through the RCS program that she discussed in that, in that presentation for the annual action plan.
Right, but when this information came out a few months ago about getting this, I had asked that, we had a conversation about how we can best spend the funds, and it was said that we weren't gonna do anything with this until we had our meeting in October to see how everything was, but now there's a detailed plan that was submitted to the county?
The, the, the plan was required in order for us to get the reimbursement, and it's required, the date, when is the submission? September 1st? So, it would not meet the October deadline for our financial, so, our financial workshop that we're going to do. So, it was our intent to get this plan submitted, bring it to the board, which we're doing tonight, for your review and consideration, and any kind of modifications that y'all want to do. Case in point, the nonprofits, other municipalities, some throughout the state, have given a little bit of money to their nonprofits. Some of them are some of the larger municipalities, but we're bringing this before you tonight with a plan of how we have spent and plan and intend to spend the money that we're getting, and if we need to discuss it and change and modify that plan in the, in the future, we can do that. It will be audited by our auditors to ensure compliance at a later date, probably at the end of the year when we do our audit. So, it's really kinda still up for discussion, if that's what you're intending.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, I was thinking it would be better to kinda have a conversation, because we really need to be able to help some of our marginalized community members that are still suffering, and with the detail of be able to, the different ways we can utilize, utilize the funds, that was the whole point of asking a few months ago about us having a conversation.
Mr. Stevens, could maybe you provide some detail on what the expenses are that's outlined in this document? So, I mean, I see the various departments with different amounts listed, and, and I wanna point out, too, that, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is helping to offset some internal operational cost that the COVID pandemic brought onto the city. We did not furlough any employees. We didn't lay anyone off. Everyone got a paycheck, so does this help cover some of those expenses?
It does, it doesn't necessarily restore any kind of loss of revenue, but it does, I guess, reimburse us for some of our expenses that we've had, specifically, some of the time expenses that we've had with our staff to the COVID-related items, as well as material expenses, and even some of the facility improvements we've had to do to, to allow interaction between the public. I know Mary's, and Mary, you wanna come up in detail just a little bit further, if you don't mind, because you're the one that spoke with most of the department heads and had all of them submit these items to you, so you can probably detail a little further than me. But some of those capital items and improvements to our facilities, at the, at the CAPS office, at Development Services, the interactions where we have public in and out, in and out, in and out, some of those improvements were necessary for us to maintain the safety of our employees and so forth and so on.
Yeah, so the couple of the, so I did send the, 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 the plan to each of the department heads and asked them, you know, is there anything on this list? And there's a list of items that are qualify for this grant, and it will be audited, and at some point, if we do something that doesn't qualify, we will have to give the money back. Primarily, we cannot use it to help offset utility, unpaid utility bills, and that was a shame for us to hear, because we kind of initially thought that would be a good, a good use for those funds. So, it's primarily just for the city itself to be, be prepared and to offset the costs that we have to go through in order to, to deal with some of the COVID restrictions. We are looking at ways to make more contactless contact with, with our employees, I mean, with our customers, so how can we provide services in a contactless what matter? We're looking at making some improvements to our phone system in the customer service area, for, for instance, so people can actually call on the phone, find out what their balance is, make their payment over the phone. That was part of what happened when we, when we introduced a new credit card system a few weeks back, was so that we can work on some more contactless ways that we can do business, for people who choose to do that. We also have opened up the doors in, at, over on Fort Totten Drive now, and we have social distancing, and there's just been some expenses with some, we've had to put up some Plexiglas windows, and we've, some, some hand sanitizers, and they're getting ready to, actually, I think Matt started today, they're gonna do some reconstruction of the driveways and the parking lots there to kinda get the traffic under control. So, those are some of the expenses we have. There's also some, we're gonna do some remodeling of some of the other buildings, so that people can come in, and it can be social distancing and contactless as much as possible to make it safe. The other thing, that's one of the other costs, is I think Sonia had reported that we've averaged about three, a little over three employees per payroll, who have been out of work for, because they've been required to quarantine. Either they are tested positive, or they have some reason they've been required to quarantine, and those folks, we do pay them, so this does reimburse us for those costs as well, so that that's some of the ones that were, that were included in here. I'm going down the list here to look, because I don't have all of them memorized. I know the fire chief sent in some expenses, basically, any of the public, any of the police and fire expenses, as you can imagine what they might have when they're having face-to-face contact with people on a, on a daily basis, just supplies to keep them safe. There are two categories on here that are a little confusing, and I actually talked to the county about them. One of them was laptops for distance learning for school kids, and the other one had to do with providing food for citizens who may need it, and he assured me those were the types of activities typically that would be done by, at the county level. They didn't expect the cities to take their funds and do those, because those aren't typically the types of things that cities do. I don't know if it means that we could or, or couldn't, if we choose to do that. I can certainly call that and ask that question again, but basically, the, the list here of eligible items include county, the types of services a county provides, as well as the types of services that the city provides.
And the county received 3-point, or 3-point something million dollars, so we're getting our percentage share of that. So, that's probably where some of those programs would be used for, for the children's expenses.
Yeah, I don't think it makes sense.
This money can also be used for purchasing PPE.
Why?
For police, fire, and anybody else that would be in contact.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and medical expenses.
And will it, will it reimburse us for some of the expenses that we already incurred?
All the way back to March.
All the way back to March and all the way through June.
Till December 31.
December.
Yeah, so we've got nine months worth of those expenses that this will cover, and we, I, it wasn't hard when I, when I got the, when I got the results back from the different department heads, we went well over what they're gonna give us, and so we just sort of shaved back.
I just was kinda wondering why police and fire had $47,000, $48,000 each, something like that, but, but Parks and Recreation had $100, but $160,000, I mean.
Alderwoman Harris, do you have a question?
Yeah, I was saying, so these funds are being utilized to reimburse expenses we are already had?
Correct, as well as any anticipated expenses through December 31st.
Okay, I don't, again, like I said, I don't understand why we didn't have a conversation. We have a fund balance that has money in it. Yes, it would be great to be reimbursed, but these funds could be utilized in a way that are directly impacting the community. Medical, let's get some testing out here. I mean, I don't understand why we didn't have a conversation to discuss how we can best use these funds.
Well, it's not too late. I mean, we can still, I had, I had to give them a plan, a budget, with a budget attached to it by September 1st. We certainly can amend that plan as you see fit, and adjust the budget as you see fit.
I think stuff like that is.
Just, just so I'm very clear, we, was it three weeks ago that basically this got, it was like, hey, here you go, by the way, we need a plan by September 1st, throw it together real quick for us, and what your expenses have been in anticipated expenses? So, I think, Alderwoman Harris, I, I, I hope that you will feel that this is the conversation. We can continue to have conversations, but ultimately, by September 1st, we have to have a plan submitted to the county, or we don't get $497,000. They'll spend it some other way. So.
Right, and I under, I understand that, Mark, but when I reached out to you, when you knew about the funds were coming, you didn't say that we had to have a plan. If that was the case, then I would have advocated for us to have a joint meeting, or have a meeting with a few people, discuss how we can, as Aldermen, think about using these funds for directly impacting the community with COVID. I mean, yes, it's great to be reimbursed, but there's still people suffering and testing. There's a lot of stuff that could be done that we haven't done. We're just accepting it and putting it in the bank to clear what we would have put out, but people are still suffering.
I'm, I'm happy to put whatever in the plan the board directs, if you wanna have that discussion.
After no other discussion, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a budget ordinance amending, amendment for the coronavirus relief funds.
Second?
Motion and second, is there further discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
At our, we can later discuss this at our October session. So, is, is, would that be a problem, or are we concluding our conversation on this tonight?
I believe this is to, if I'm wrong, at least get it into the budget, because we have to, we have to make room for that amount of money to receive that amount of money. So, I'm looking at it that way. We can.
Can a plan be amended, I reckon is the question?
Yes.
Yes, it can be amended at any time, and then at, ultimately, at the end of the fiscal year, will be audited next fall.
We just, we have to spend it by December 31st, so, we just, as long as we can, as long as we can make that happen. If we don't spend it, we do, it's very clear that we, we need to pay it back, yeah.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Bingle.
Yes.
Motion carries. I have number 15.
Thank you, Mayor. I have number 15 is a resolution approving a utility relocation agreement with NC DOT for the US-70 Havelock Bypass. NC DOT has requested the city relocate its electric utilities to facilitate highway construction of the US-70 Havelock Bypass. Preliminary engineering costs are estimated at $81,800, similar to agreements approved by the board at their last meeting. This agreement recognizes and establishes the estimated cost in terms for reimbursement for, from NC DOT. The balance of the reimbursable engineering and construction expenses will be forthcoming as a separate agreement, and I think y'all all received an email that I sent earlier this week that had all of the projects kinda summarized with what some of those reimbursable expenses. I think Mayor had mentioned that at our last meeting, so hopefully that was helpful.
So, all these funds are reimbursed by the state?
Yes.
Not all for funds, I'm not gonna say that, but for, for this particular one here.
This, this sudden Havelock bypass is.
I think these are the $81,000.
Fiber is, I don't know if fiber's gonna be.
You need somebody here, please.
I don't know if the fiber is gonna be completely refundable if we have to get into the fiber system out in that area, but the electric.
Do we have fiber all the way down there?
Yes, we do.
Yes.
Okay, so, then I'll make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving a utility relocation agreement with NC DOT for the US-70 Havelock Bypass.
Second?
Motion and second, is there discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Motion carries. I have number 16.
Thank you, Mayor. I have number 16 is an amendment to the 2019 Electric Improvements Project Fund. Capital project ordinance will appropriate funding for expenses related to the DOT utility relocation projects. As recently discussed, the city will relocate some of its electric and fiber infrastructure to facilitate some of DOD's roadway improvement needs. Most of those expenses are associated with electric relocation, will be reimbursed by DOT. While the total costs of the projects have not been identified to date, the amendment provides for estimated cost at $2,301,814. There's a memo that's included in your packet. I'm sure that Mary or Charlie can help answer any questions you may have.
Well, my only question is, or request, is that you make sure y'all do everything you can to make sure that somebody else is paying for it besides the city in New Bern.
Yes, sir.
I can assure you that we're already on that.
Yes, sir.
All right, somebody else needs to make a motion.
There's no more discussion on this item? Then, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we consider, not consider, adopt an amendment to the 2019 Electric Improvement Project Fund.
Second?
Motion and second, is there discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Bingle.
Yes.
Let's go to I have number 17.
Thank you, Mayor. I have number 17 is an amendment to Section 46-2, Discharge of Firearms or Pellet Guns of Chapter 46 of the Code of Ordinances. Changes are being requested to be made to our Code of Ordinances to include a new section for the allowance of indoor firing ranges that currently does not exist in our code, and there's a brief memo that's been included in your packet from Mr. Rue Jerry, and Mr. Rue Jerry and Mr. Davis and myself will answer any questions the board may have regarding this.
Is this something that you guys were just looking at and decided we didn't have it, and we needed to address it, or do we have someone who's actually gonna be interested in the range?
I think there is some interest in, two requests, actually.
Wonderful. So, then.
Well, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Yeah. I guess I'll direct this to you, Mark.
Sure.
That's true. The, when it says discharge of firearms, I know you cannot discharge firearms, but they're in the city limits. So, how did it come about, particular areas where you will be able to go and discharge firearms? Is this not the one?
I think what this, so essentially, we have code that is all-encompassing of the entire city limits that says you can't discharge firearms anywhere in the city, except for, there's two locations, I think, one is out towards Pleasant Hill, and another is down, Pass to Burna. Pass to Burna, out towards where the, the Blue Water Rise development is. That was the only places, and those were for hunting reasons only that were specified. However, being that there's a no discharge in these city limits, that meant that you technically could not have an indoor firing range, because you would be discharging a firearm in the city limits. So, therefore, this qualification change needs to occur because of the allowance of being able to fire inside. Have you got anything else?
Alderman Best, your, your question, though, was how do we identify the areas in which you can do this?
Yes.
We have a zoning classification within C3 that allows for indoor entertainment activities. This would be an indoor entertainment activity, but because you can't discharge a firearm in the city, you can't have that activity. So with this exception and the discharge of firearms statute, now the C3 zoning will apply to this activity and it would be allowed in the C3.
So where is this proposed area within the Pleasant Hill community and the North Glen Burnie Road area? Because you got those two listed here under the explanation, so I'm wondering, where did that come from? How you arrived?
She was talking about that's the code stuff that's been there for years.
Yeah, that's not new. That's in the existing ordinance where you can go hunt, that's there for hunting out in the rural parts of the city. You can shoot deer, you can hunt. Those are allowed. This doesn't change that.
All right, I want to know because I didn't, I wasn't aware of how this came about, period.
That's been there for 30 years.
Okay.
Hey, Jeff, I'm sorry.
Just one follow-up question for you. So this does not change the fact that you still cannot discharge a firearm?
You cannot.
Outdoors within the city.
Unless you're out west.
Understood, besides those two exceptions.
That's right, you cannot discharge a firearm unless you are in an indoor range after you adopt this.
Okay.
Scott, before you sit down, I want to ask you another question as well.
Sure.
Now, we all are aware of the growth on the west end of New Bern. Now, you're saying Pleasant Hill is a rural area, but it's actually city, which may be some in-depth far out rural portions of it.
Right.
Now, how can this be changed for having an area where people can go hunting once you get all of these potential housing areas coming? Is that something that we're going to have a challenge with down the road because you're saying this has been in effect for 30 years or more?
Strike it, we'll just strike it.
Okay.
Whenever you want, whenever you want.
All right.
Part of those, when that part was annexed, right, folks tend not to like annexations and they like their hunting. So one of the compromises you make is you allow for hunting even though you are annexing. But your point is, there comes a day where hunting's not appropriate because the area has grown. And when that day comes, and it may be now, we need to go back in and do a little surgery on that.
We sure do because there's a lot of development out there and there's a lot of homes coming in. I just see the potential there of hazard. Especially on this side.
Yeah, I know, I know out past Tawburna, there were, Warethausser had hunting licenses, you know, 30 years ago out there. And that area is actually grown quite a bit as well, so the time may have come to take both of those out.
And I'm also looking on the other side of the road for Lake Tyler as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
You don't want to take them out yet down on that way.
What was that?
Well, there's quite a bit of hunting down that way still.
There is.
What is that area, Alderman Astor?
I'm talking about old airport road area down that way.
Exactly.
There's a large portion of that area down there that's, you know, wooded lands that's inside the city that the homeowners use for dove hunting and stuff like that.
It's kind of nerve wracking when you can look out your back door and you see somebody going across the field with a rifle.
Sure.
You know, I mean, it's kind of nerve wracking.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's something I think we need to highly address.
Just, just so you know, like, if you look at the backside of Green Bar, that's not the city limits. So people that live on Pine Valley Drive can see that exactly what you're talking about. They look right out their back door and see people hunting behind them because it's not the city limits. And that's something we would never be able to control unless we were to annex that in.
That's right.
We get phone calls all the time about gunshots being heard behind Tawburna over there, which happens to be in the national, a lot of us in the national forest lands.
Exactly.
But I do know there are several people that down around the sand pits and stuff that have, you know, dove hunts.
For sure.
Regularly, so. But I have another question, and Jeff, and Jeff, maybe you can help me answer this one, but what about black powder? In the state of North Carolina, is that considered a firearm? Maybe you should include that in this ordinance then, because if not, people could take a black powder gun and go out in their backyard in Tawburna and shoot something, right?
What Jeff is saying is, our ordinance goes down to pellet guns, so I'm comfortable that black powder is covered in our definition because we pick up pellet guns.
Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, we adopt an amendment to section 46-2, discharge of firearms or pellet guns of chapter 46 of the code ordinance.
Second.
Motion and second, is there discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number 18.
Thank you, Mayor, item number 18 is a resolution approving the addition of a streetlight on Brookshire Drive. Rosanna Cash, a resident of Brookshire Drive, requested additional streetlighting at the cul-de-sac of her street. Department of Public Utilities evaluated the area and determined the current lighting does meet the city's light standard. However, as we typically do, police department also provides a recommendation based on their evaluation, and they did recommend installation of an additional light for security and safety purposes. The estimated cost of installing a light is $2,095.18 and the monthly utility charge for service will be $20.28. There's memos included from Mr. Bouchard in your packet and we'll be happy to answer questions.
Beforehand questions.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution approving the addition of a streetlight on Brookshire Drive.
Second.
Motion and second, is there discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Beagle?
Yes.
Motion carries, let's go to item number 19, appointments, Alderman Bingle?
None tonight, sir.
Alderman Astor? I'm sorry, Alderwoman Harris, I'm sorry.
I know that Candy Ward resigned from the Stanley White Advisory Committee on August 26th and there needs to be a new appointment. I had someone come to me and was interested, and that was Kurt Stewart.
Is that a motion?
Um, yes, I would like to make a motion to appoint Kurt Stewart to the housing, I mean, to the Stanley White Advisory Committee.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Do you have any other appointments? Alderwoman Harris?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Alderman Astor?
None tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Kinsey?
None tonight, sir.
Alderman Best?
Yes, also, I have, I wanted to ask, I guess I would ask Foster, with the Stanley White Advisory Committee, is there a number of members? Is there a set number of members for that committee?
There is a set number of members and that was established in the resolution that the Board of Aldermen approved back in June.
And that is 11, 12? Because I also, when I got this notification, I also had an individual that wanted to serve on this advisory committee as well. So I didn't know if that was going to create a problem with actually allowing another slot. If so, then.
So a new resolution would have to come before the board to change the amount of people on that committee for that to happen.
Well, I'll check with this individual, Steve, if she is still wanting to serve on this committee and then so we'll handle it at that time. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And I don't have anything else, sir.
Okay, Alderman Odom?
None, sir.
Okay, attorney's report. City manager's report.
I have two things. One, I wanted to give the board a quick update on the opening of facilities. We'll be discussing with staff tomorrow about opening our facilities beginning Monday next week. That way we can have the week to prepare, the remaining part of the week to prepare. I will say that I'm going to discuss some other limitations as far as that opening with our public safety folks. I want to really sit down and follow down into their organizations to make sure that they're not exposed any further than they need to be with the policing fire because we certainly don't want to be having a pandemic that occurred similar in nature to Clayton that happens in our fire police departments because we still need them to serve. But otherwise, we plan on opening City Hall. The CAPS building has already opened up at Fort Totten for customer service and then, you know, we'll be opening the others, HR and Development Services, which technically we've been open the entire time by appointments only. It's just walk-in, typical walk-in traffic we've kind of been restricted on. So, but anyways, we'll be opening that up on Monday unless the board wishes to do anything different. The other thing that I was going to mention was we've, I've heard it multiple times here, people have referenced the date of the October summit. We need to set that date so that everybody can get it on their calendars. We're less than a month away if you're going to do it than in the first of the month. If you're going to do it towards the middle or latter, we have about a month left. So just wanted to make sure and remind the board.
One of the big issues was what got approved tonight, so.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think we have a lot on the agenda, though, so I think it's going to take a while.
Tuesday, October 6th?
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
What time?
Are we going to be able to set up a Zoom because I will be four days post-surgery and not able to attend? I would like to be able to see what's going on.
We should go to Zoom or something.
We can Zoom her in. It'll be televised too, like all the other meetings happen, but we can, we can definitely try to set up a Zoom.
Did you hear that?
Are you good with that? Alderman Astor?
Is it going to be at Development Service or no?
I would be here.
Uh, yeah, yeah, we'd try, we'd set it up here.
Okay, all right, then if it's going to be at City Hall, then I'll just, and it's going to be recorded live, right?
It'll be recorded, it'll be live, it'll be Facebook Live, like any other meeting that we have. Yep.
All right, that's Mark.
What time?
Six o'clock?
Should we start it a little earlier, maybe?
Five o'clock? I don't care, I'm retired.
I wouldn't even mind, I think we're going to go for a few hours, so I wouldn't even mind.
Four, four o'clock? Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we schedule a special workshop located at City Hall on Tuesday, October 6th at 4:00 PM.
Second.
Motion and second, is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Brendan, you going to say that?
Motion carries, Mr. Stevens getting some complaints about the Eckers building over across from the old Eckers Drug Store, a lot of activity over there. Do you need the board in any way to give any direction on any housing authority items? My understanding is they might be using our facilities or is there anything along those lines that we need to give you any policy direction on as far as our helping them out in any way we can, partnering with them for better affordable housing in New Bern and?
It's entirely up to one of the board members to do, but some of the board members have requested that I look into the potential of allowing the housing authority to have their meetings here. It's ultimately the board's decision of whether they want to allow the housing authorities to have their meetings here. And then I've also checked into the cost for them to televise and, and do their own shows, I guess if you want to call it that, on their own Facebook Live and what that cost is. I forwarded that information to the interim executive director, Teresa Lee, as well as their chair of their board. So I'm waiting kind of their decisions at this point, and I think we have a meeting set up or potentially going to be set up sometime latter part of this week.
Third Monday.
To discuss that and those costs, but ultimately, I think the board still needs to make a decision as whether or not they want to allow the housing authority to have their meetings here because they typically have their meetings on the third Monday of the month at 4:30, which means the facility would have to be staffed and, and some people would have to stay over for that meeting because we would be.
I'll do anything we can to help them for a better housing in New Bern, but.
Yeah, I think it's important that our citizens know what's going on and they're able to view it. That's why I've been urging them to do something, you know, more public than what they do. I would hope we'd be okay. Do you need a motion on that, Mark, or?
Just direction of the board would be great.
I would.
So is there?
I have a question. So if the housing authority is going to be meeting there, Mark just said that if it goes over, it's going to be staffed. Yes, we're working with it, but I mean, what about the coverage for pay for the employees?
So the part of, part of the Facebook Live cost requires a, would require Colleen to stay and work that. So she had incorporated some of her hourly cost into that figure for her to be staying here, so ultimately she would be the staff member that would be here to close up after the meeting is completed.
Alderman Harris, all the financial information has been given to the housing authority showing what the cost would be for all of the above.
Okay, so when will we get a response to that before we make a decision?
Well, I mean, we could do that, but if they're not willing to pay the cost, then, you know, we, we can make the decision if they're not willing to pay the cost, then that negates, you know, we can give direction to allowing to do it.
Ours is based on we're, we're okay with it, but here's the information on what we're, what we're expecting.
Correct. I believe that's already been given to them, correct?
It has been, and that's part of the discussion I think that needs to happen on Friday. If their intent is to move forward with having their meetings here and it's okay with the board, but they don't want to do the Facebook Live streaming, then that means that there will be staff necessary to hang around, to close up afterwards, City Hall. So therefore, if that's the case, then we would need to negotiate what, their compensation for whatever that's going to be, along with the Swagit advert, or basically the video that they do on our city CTV3 website and, and on our live CTV3 channel.
My thought, and again, I'm not trying to get far away, money's important here, but, you know, I just wanted to partner and facilitate the opportunity for the housing authority to use our facilities and obviously use our public forum. Again, the end result is better housing, more affordable housing, safer housing for our citizens. I don't think we're casting a stone here for 10 years or something. This, I mean, my, my thought was just, let's start the process, start the conversation and, you know, probably six months, the housing authority will know from there where they want to go. We can, we can discuss policy changes and decisions a little more in detail once they, you know, get in here and see how the process happens and then they might like it, they might not. Again, I'm just trying to offer the opportunity for more discussion and end result, more, more inventory in our city.
And I totally agree, but they still should be responsible to pay for staff because they're not part of the city. You appoint them and there's a budget and they need to make sure they budget funds if they want to be able to utilize the building and the equipment and things like that. So that's just my thought.
Yes, ma'am.
So, Mark, after Friday, you will know, you have feedback from the housing authority and then?
Yeah, assuming we have the meeting, yes. I mean, the meeting's not set yet, but that was, that's kind of what everybody's working towards, is either Thursday or Friday, have a, have a discussion on this.
And then we'll know at that time whether or not they want to share the cost, their portion of it.
They will have to absorb their portion of the cost of, if they want to do the, the additional meetings, we've got to add additional meetings to what it costs us, so, yes. And it's to the tune of about, and please don't quote me on this, it's about 600, I think, a month and 3,000 or so a year. Or 6,300, 6,300 initial cost, I'm sorry. This feedback's getting me. 6,300 in an initial capital cost and then you've got about $600 a month after that. They do the Facebook Live fee with the embedded encoder and all that stuff.
Anything else on the city manager's report?
No.
Let's go to new business, Alderman Odom.
Nothing tonight, sir.
Alderman Best?
Um, yes. Mr. Chief, sit here. There, he moved on me.
Yes, ma'am.
Chief, in the past, you have worked with, with me and others about the speeders on Highway 55 and I do know it's, it's a highway. But is there any way that you can make some connections with the highway patrol to see if they can set up some type of surveillance out there or something? Because I am afraid that someone is going to get killed right there at the daycare center. The cars are coming in and out of there and there's speeders out there and I'm afraid that it's going to be a serious accident there and somebody may lose their lives. So I know you worked with us before and if you can.
Yes, ma'am.
Look into that, I would appreciate it. And I know the citizens and I know the daycare owner would be most happy with it.
Sir, you do that.
Thank you very much. And that's all I have.
Okay, Alderman Kinsey?
That's tonight, sir.
Alderman Astor?
Actually, I have one thing that I want to share with the board and it's dealing with FEMA. We have an appeal in place with FEMA for somewhere in the tune of 800,000, maybe 900,000 dollars that was denied. And one of the reasons it was denied was because we have to submit our appeal to the state of North Carolina. The state of North Carolina has to submit the appeal to FEMA. Well, one of the reasons why it was denied was because FEMA said the state of North Carolina was four days late submitting, which isn't true.